Okay, I'll call our meeting order September the 20th. Our invocation today is from Commissioner Freeman-Hardison, June.
Bow head, please. Dear God, guide our hearts and minds. Let us benefit the people of Wayne County. And in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of August 16th and special meeting of August the 29th.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion on the motion? Here and none? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We added a budget amendment number 119 under the consent agenda to budget amendments. And we added a new business line item number three, which is change order number two, which is addition of taxi lane adjacent to our sunshade hangars at the airport for a change order on that. That's all.
Okay. All right, then, under special presentations, a motion to approve.
The motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. We need a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
So move. I've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Here and none? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, now special presentation. We'll need a motion to approve the Louise Daly Shepherd 100th birthday proclamation.
You want me to read that, sir?
And if you'll read that for us, I'd appreciate it.
Be glad to. Whereas longevity of life is a blessing for an individual and for the community in which they live, for the benefits of their knowledge, creativity, and experiences in which they bring to all. And whereas Louise Daly Shepherd was born on September 4th, 1922, to the late Bart Timas and Katie Bell Smith in Wayne County, North Carolina, as the first born of 10 children. And whereas Louise Daly Shepherd has lived her entire life in Wayne County, raising three children with her late husband, Mr. George E. Daly, and also survived special friend Gordon Best and husbands Wayne Whitley and Andrew Shepherd. And whereas Mrs. Shepherd was a homemaker until the passing of her husband, at which time she delighted in working retail jobs, making friendships that continue today. And whereas Mrs. Shepherd has attended St. John Freewill Baptist Church on Highway 111 South her entire life, always having a servant's heart and showing her love for the Lord Daly. And whereas Mrs. Shepherd has been the epitome of a matriarch, wife, mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother with three children, four grandchildren, 12 great-grandchildren, eight great-great-grandchildren. And whereas Mrs. Shepherd is a wonderful, loving, sweet person to everyone she meets, greeting all with a smile and a hug. Now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim September 20th, 2022, as Louise Daly Shepherd Day in Wayne County, and urge all citizens of the county of Wayne to join in paying tribute to this very special member of our community, this the 20th day of September, 2022.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve that proclamation?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Here and none? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, next item?
All right, number two is update of our 911 Computer Aided Dispatch Project by our 911 Director Chris Barnes.
Well, I'm glad somebody explained to me what CAD stands for. Let me hear that again.
Well, I'd say Chip took my thunder right there because I was going to explain it to you already. Good morning, everyone. I won't take much of your time. I'm just going to try to hit the highlights. I don't want to get into the minutia of the project. But after we signed our contract in December of 2021, we had an initial kickoff with Central Square for this One Solution CAD project in March. And since then have made, I think, and Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've made major headway on this project. The software's already been installed on our server. Since then, we've also, along with IT Department, have completed some system admin training on this project. We've also, along with IT, worked on the interfaces. As you guys will recall, there are multiple interfaces between our computer-aided dispatch, our CAD project, and either the fire departments, Goldsboro Police Department, Goldsboro Fire Department. So we've got a lot of interfaces in place. So those are being worked on. They seem to be in place from our side of the house. There will be some things that their individual departments will need to do. Along with Julio and the GIS Department, we produced new maps for this new computer-aided dispatch system. We'll continue working on those. IT, along with us, has got everything prepped for AVL in the new CAD. And if you guys will recall, AVL is that Automatic Vehicle Location, which will be where we dispatch closest unit as opposed to having a, like, a response plan in place. Also, since this project, we've completed some initial and intermediate audits. Our intermediate audit was completed just this last week. So we'll find out this week kind of where we stand on everything. So I will say that we were absolutely on the right path to be go-live with this project by November. However, unfortunately, last week, we've just learned that this project will end up getting pushed back. That is no fault of our own. That is on Central Square at this point. They have had one of their team members that has left the company, which was going to be our trainer on this project. And they cannot line up another trainer until probably January, December maybe at the earliest. So I hate to bring the bad news in there. I thought I would start with the good news, and I apologize. So once we, the things that are left really to get complete before go-live, one obviously is going to be that training piece. That will be a big piece of it. We've still got to complete the code tables in the background of the computer-aided dispatch system. We'll have some final audits. We will also do what they consider to be a mock go-live. We'll actually test the system, but not in an actual live environment. And as long as we get all that done, again, we're looking probably January, February next year when this project will be complete. Any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can you explain some of the improvements that this CAD will do? I mean, what is some of the difference from the older system in this system?
Absolutely. So we will regain a lot of customer, well, there's going to be a lot of customization that I can do within this new CAD that I do not have that functionality with now. And, you know, some of you firemen will understand, from a response plan level, there's going to be a lot more customization. Whereas I can make the CAD be specific to departments and what they would like to do within their own jurisdiction. The introduction of AVL is going to be fantastic. I've never worked in a system that had automatic vehicle location, but I can only imagine that it just increases your response times. If the main point is to get help to an address as quickly as possible, AVL should do that. So that's going to be just a game changer right there.
That's going to play in more with EMS and law enforcement.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Than it will with the fire service.
Yes, sir. And as I understand from the office side of the house, that is, that's pretty much ready to go. So we're just kind of waiting for go-live to put that in place.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
It's a huge project and a long process. It takes a lot of parties and a lot of departments, IT Department and GIS and, like I say, the 911 Center. So it's a huge undertaking anytime they do software upgrades. So it's always for the better. Our next presenter is Eastern Carolina Council Executive Director David Bone.
Well, welcome to Wayne County.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. Just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to introduce myself and hopefully reintroduce Eastern Carolina Council to you. Do want to thank Mr. Foster for serving on our board. Appreciate Wayne County's membership in Eastern Carolina Council. So first of all, just a little bit about myself. I bring to the table 20 years of experience in local government, both as a city and county manager. Most of my career has been in eastern North Carolina. So I've served earlier in my career as town manager in Chadburg, Elizabeth Town, and Wendell. And then served as county manager for nine years in Martin County. Most recently, I was county manager in Davie County. But again, most of my career has been in eastern North Carolina and have enjoyed the opportunity to return to this part of the state. I started work as executive director on May 16th, and I'm very excited to be here. One thing I also just want to mention, I do serve you and the other 99 counties in North Carolina as your representative on the state 911 board. So I've been serving in that role, representing the Association of County Commissioners for the last seven years. I've got two more years left on this term, so.
We need to speak after this meeting.
Yes, sir. Be glad to. Just a little bit about Eastern Carolina Council. It is a multi-county local government planning and development organization. We are one of 16 councils of government in the state of North Carolina. And we serve as a conduit between our local government members, as well as our state and federal partners. We also provide technical assistance to local governments and administer projects and programs which benefit our region and our citizens. We focus on regional collaboration and partnership. We serve nine counties, Carteret, Craven, Duplin, Green, Jones, Lenore, Onslow, Pamlico, and last but not least, Wayne, as well as 50 municipalities. Our mission is to improve the region's quality of life by providing planning, economic development, and senior services to local governments and area residents by maximizing resources and collaborating regionally. Just want to talk about a few of our departments. Our largest department currently is Area Agency on Aging. We work with senior centers and our different providers to advocate for senior population and help provide service. We have two RPOs, or Rural Transportation Planning Organizations, the Eastern Carolina RPO, as well as the Down East RPO. With that, we work with our local governments and NC DOT, Department of Transportation, to work on the State Transportation Improvement Plan and the long-range and local and regional multimodal transportation plans. We also have Economic Development Planning. ECC is the designated Economic Development Administration, Economic Development District for our region. So with that, we have a number of responsibilities. First of all, the main responsibility is to develop and implement a comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDs, for this region. This SEDs is basically a regional economic development plan. It talks about our priorities as a region. And we're currently working to develop the update for that. We actually update it every year, but we have a five-year update that's a major update, and we're currently doing that now. So we do have a survey that we have shared. With that survey, we are seeking input on priorities for economic development. So certainly encourage you to fill out that survey and encourage other community and business partners to do so as well. Be glad if you would, you know, showcase that on your social media and website as well. We also provide some administrative services. Currently, we are assisting the town of Newport with your town manager search. And we also have community planning and planning technical assistance. Now, this is something that we have not had as much capacity in recent years. We have not had staff for about two and a half years. We have had some strategic partnerships with a firm that helps provide some services. And I will be, and I'm very glad to say that we have hired a senior community planner. He started last week, comes to us from another council of governments, so he's well experienced in his role. And we're also recruiting for a second community planner currently. So traditionally, this planning staff has helped with, you know, small communities as well as counties in developing land use ordinances, land use plans, subdivision ordinances, stormwater, quite a bit. Now, we do have several things that they are focusing on right now because of the funding source. One of the main things is with ARPA, technical assistance. We've got a funding source for that, and so that's going to be one of their focus areas. Also, we have some disaster recovery funds. And so we've got a proposal in to help with that, funding from the state for both of those programs. And so we're still waiting to get the approval from the state for that disaster recovery plan of action, but we hope to begin moving forward with that very soon as well. Want to talk about the 90-day plan that we have had, you know, my first 90 days and some of the accomplishments that we've had to date. First of all, establish board and organizational priorities. The board approved my priorities that I proposed. Secondly, we want to build trust, relationships, and line of communication with our members. We started with weekly communication that we sent to the executive committee and general membership board. We restarted our monthly newsletter in July. We started meeting with county managers. We do that quarterly to begin assessment of services. We sent out information about grant funding and ARPA. We're reaching out to managers and officials about their needs and desires for services from our organization. We're also beginning to meet with city, both the city and county managers together. We'll be doing that in October. Building staff and organizational capacity and expanding services. We applied for technical assistance for regional council governments, and that comes with the ARPA money and disaster recovery. We've also got some, a grant from EDA for organizational capacity building as well. So we've got three funding sources to help with our new staff. We've had a new finance director that started in August. She's doing a great job so far. And again, we have a senior community planner that started last week. Next goal, develop a plan and take action to improve financial sustainability and accountability. We had our budget approved. We got the grants to assist with our programs. We also want to make sure that we're being transparent. We've added budget audit information to our website. Next goal, focus on customer service and providing value to you, our members. We're continuing this outreach effort, not only with me, but other members of our staff, our senior services, AAA, Area Agents on Aging, as well as our RPO staff as well. And that's just going to be increasing with our community planning staff with their ARPA assistance and disaster recovery training and so forth. Next, we want to seek out opportunities to help facilitate regional collaboration and provide regional leadership. We assisted the UNC School of Government with Affordable Housing webinar back in May-June timeframe. Working on school government, trying to follow up to have a regional training session on affordable housing as well. We're assisting with the RISE Eastern NC, which stands for Regions Innovating for Strong Economies and Environment. And that's primarily aimed to support resiliency efforts and particularly the storm-impacted regions. So we had a preliminary report that was done in August, and we're going to have some public meetings on that in the near future. So I'll send more information about that once I've firmed up. We've worked with NCE Impact, which is with the School of Government on a town hall event at ECU. And also very excited that we've partnered with Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board on a grant application to grow workforce development leadership in our region, and that grant application was successful. So we're sending a cohort of six from our region to participate in that leadership development focused on workforce development. Lastly, we want to make sure that we're telling our success stories and improve organizational You know, one of the things that we, I think, don't do enough of is to tell the good story. There are a lot of good work being done in our communities, in our organizations, and we want to highlight the good things that are being done in Eastern Carolina Council as well as our member organizations. And so we're using several different means to do that, through our newsletter, through Facebook, and with my personal LinkedIn account. So we want to tell the stories, you know, the grant awards, the new programs, the new initiatives that you're doing, and we want to share that story. And, you know, by sharing that, you know, with other counties, we can learn from each other and get ideas from each other as well. So just moving forward, we want to focus on customer service to our members, creating value for our members. We want to be your trusted partner for resource information. So North Carolina is blessed with a lot of great resources, School of Government, Local Government Commission, Association of County Commissioners, and municipalities, and those are all great resources. But we do want to be another one of those trusted resources for you and your staff. So if you have a question, if you have a need, you know, we may not have all the answers, but we want to be your trusted resource. And if we don't have answer, we're going to find the answer for you. We are expanding our planning staff, expanding our planning services. We want to expand our grant writing opportunities. Our, you know, that's certainly one thing that I've heard a lot of, that, you know, there are a lot of, there's a lot of need for grant writers, particularly right now. Right now, our planners are going to be focusing on that grant writing, along with several other things, so they can't just focus specifically on grant writing. But we also have that strategic partnership with Colliers Engineering. We've got a relationship with them, and so they're helping us with the grant writing to help with some of our member needs as well. But do hope to grow that grant writing. And then lastly, just, you know, providing leadership and bringing governments together and other strategic partners for regional collaboration on a myriad of issues, and certainly want to get input from you on what topics that you would like to collaborate on as well. ARPA, we're going to be working a lot on that, economic development, transportation, training. There's, I'm hearing a lot about that, how in the past, Eastern Carolina has brought folks together with, you know, training workshops that are held locally in our region so that, you know, you don't have to send your staff or you don't have to go, you know, to Chapel Hill, to Raleigh, to Charlotte to get the training. And so we're collaborating with school government and other resources to try to host things locally as much as we can. You know, regional water and sewer projects, stormwater, legislative advocacy, military, Department of Defense, economic development focus, you know, all these things that we want to collaborate on. So again, just want to thank you for the opportunity to come talk to me today. Thank you for your collaboration and your partnership. We look very much forward to serving you and addressing you and working together with you to help our region move forward. So do you have any questions?
No. David, I'd just like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
I'm glad to see that Chip is finally turning around.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
We've got a great team, and, you know, I think we've got a good vision with our board, and so we're very excited about our path forward.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bone, the information that you're talking about, that you're sharing, are you sharing it with the commissioners as well? Did you get an email on that? I don't remember seeing anything.
There have, so the Friday updates, I sent a Friday update to the executive committee and to the general membership board. I will be glad, there are some things that I have shared with all commissioners, but, you know, I know I didn't want to inundate you, but if you have a desire, if you want me to start sharing that with you, I'd be glad to do that.
I would.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you again.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to receive that besides Ms. Cott?
Absolutely. If you will send that in, that'd be great.
Okay.
So Carol, I think, can provide you our email addresses, and just, if you will send it, that'd be great.
Very good.
Let me say this.
Yes, sir.
In the past, I've been on the board of the ECC, and there was some question in regards to benefits, or what is the benefit of being a member?
Question.
And it really, I'm pleased to see that you have taken on this role. You certainly have got the experience and the knowledge that needed to be brought to the board. And it's very clear that you've got a clear vision of where you want to take ECC. And I just commend you for it.
Thank you.
I thank you so much for taking the position. That said, I'd also want to take this time to say that I encourage you to focus very heavily in regards to grant writing. I'll give an example, and I'm saying this in a very positive way. Mount Olive, I think, was a member of ECC. As I recall, when I was on the board, I think they currently are a member. But that community has been under a sewer moratorium for a decade, which meant that there was no growth in Mount Olive. They could not connect one restroom onto their sewer system. And I was notified within the last month that Mount Olive somehow or another has reached out and has applied for and received one grant of $14 million, and another grant is there, are on the final list, for another $8 million. And it's going to take dollars like that to solve their sewer problem. I mean, there's major improvements that have to be handled. They did not have the resources in order to do that within the community. And so that is one area, not only for Mount Olive, but for all these smaller municipalities. They need these grant dollars.
Yes, sir.
And there couldn't be a more lucrative time to be applying for grants because there's so many grants that are out there. So I just encourage you, please, do what you can to bring in that grant writing ability and offer it to these communities.
Thank you. If I may, just follow up real quickly on that. So first of all, I do want to add, so we had our general membership board recently, and so we did update new bylaws, and so we've got some changes there. Our boards are going to be meeting more frequently and be more engaged, so I think that's going to be a good step moving forward as well. On the grant writing, so just one thing I just want to mention about, you know, the way a council of government operates and has its physical management and budgeting. So it is very unique, and, you know, coming from city and county government, where I had the benefit of a tax base to help generate revenue, that was certainly, you know, something that I appreciate more now, but, you know, because we don't have that tax base. And, you know, quite frankly, councils of government work almost more like a nonprofit than a unit of local government. You know, we do have membership dues, and that's an important part, but, you know, most of our funding comes through grants. And so basically, as a council of government, we have to be very entrepreneurial in developing our funding streams. And, you know, we have to have sources of revenue that support the services that we provide. And so grant writing, you know, developing that aspect, and particularly if we've had dedicated staff for that, basically, our staff has to pay for themselves. And so, you know, we've got to, you know, it can be a chicken and the egg situation, you know, where we've got to develop enough capacity to begin this new service, but we've also got to be able to sustain ourselves as well. And so that's why we're starting with the community planners to work on the grant writing. We're supplementing that with our strategic partners. But again, you know, we do hope to grow that service, but we've got to have that financial capability at the same time. Sure.
Okay, great. Any other comments?
Thank you. I mean, I appreciate what you're doing. I understand that, you know, as far as grant writing go, you can't do everything that you want to do, you know what I mean, because of funding and everything. I mean, we're actually, as a county, waiting on our grant writer ourselves, you know what I'm saying? So you can't, you know, put that all on you or say what you haven't done or anything because I know it's a lot going on and a lot of different things and a lot of different moving parts in the organization. So, you know, we have to help Mount Olive as well, you know what I'm saying? We all do, you know what I mean? So I just appreciate what you're doing, and thank you for stepping up and doing the job, doing the job.
Thank you. And thank you again for your membership and collaboration.
Thank you.
Interesting update. Appointment committee. I understand we have two appointments?
Yes, we do, sir. And I'll probably butcher these names. Forgive me. These are coming to you as a motion. We have DeNora Keys reported to the Latino County Council.
Okay, that's in form of a motion. Any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
And we have a motion to appoint to the Pipe Bill Planning Committee, the ETJ position. And we have a motion to appoint to the Pipe Bill Planning Committee, the ETJ position, Danny Van.
David.
Dever.
David, yeah. Okay, motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
Thank you.
And consent agenda. And we have a very extensive consent agenda that we went over in our agenda meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
With appropriate budget.
With appropriate budget.
With appropriate budget amendments.
As needed.
Okay, a motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right. And we'll move on to new business. Scrub.
Okay, number one under new business is a motion to approve changes in the convenience center, site hours for the Wayne County landfill and Mr. Randy Rogers is here, the director, to discuss these changes.
Good morning.
Good morning, morning. How are y'all?
Great.
Good, good. Come before you this morning to request a adjustment in a convenience center hours only, not the landfill, just the convenience centers. Go from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. We have met with all the site attendants, made aware of the plan, if it goes forward. They're fine with it, everything's good. We are set to go. We are requesting November 1st to be a start date for the changeover. Give us time to get information out to the citizens of the changes.
Did you just say Monday through Friday or Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday.
Through Saturday.
Saturday, yes, sir. Monday through Saturday.
And from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and closed on Sunday?
Yes, sir.
Same time every day.
Yep.
Yeah. It was, it was very confusing.
It was.
For having, you know, mixed times on different dates.
It was.
I've got multiple phone calls, but I can tell you there'll be one former county manager that will be happy.
So the present, the present schedule now is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 7:30 to 6:00, and Wednesday's 1:00 to 6:00. And proposing that it'll be Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 6:00, and closed on Sunday, same hours every day.
Will this affect the salaries in any way?
They got the salary increase with the new fiscal year and there's going to be more hours open throughout the week.
It won't take any additional employees.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
We can use the same employees and.
How much more will this be costing a year?
Shouldn't cost anything.
No.
We're shortening the time from 7:30 to 8:00, not adding any additional employees. And those are part-time, so they're limited on the number of hours they can work a year. So we have to make it do with what we have.
Okay. I just want to, when, sure, comment before we wrong this, I just want to commend your staff, especially the guys out there, 85-degree days, sweating, always, they're always helpful.
I do want to take a minute and just give a shout out to the site attendants. We've got some very wonderful ladies and gentlemen that do that job.
Exactly.
It's not easy. It's not an easy job to to deal with that work schedule and and the different people that come in with different problems, they want answers, and they really do a really good stand-up job to do that. So thank you to them.
I got one quick more question. So you're saying we're at 7:30, we're moving to 8:00 a.m., still closing at 6:00. So Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, that's two and a half hours that will be changing from 7:30 to 8:00. Open on Wednesdays from 1:00 to 6:00. So you're going from 8:00 to 1:00, which is five hours. And what are those two and a half hours that nobody's getting paid, those other two and a half hours nobody's getting paid for? That's what I'm confused on. Because you're saying that you're changing everything from Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. All right, so on Wednesday, we would normally be open from 1:00 to 6:00, right? That's the present schedule. Correct?
Yes, but he has some part-time, we already have additional part-timers that work as, that don't work every day. That we would draw them in to work the additional hour, those additional hours, but there would be an additional cost that's already budgeted for.
Right.
So there's no additional, there's not a change order or not a budget amendment for additional salaries?
There's not, the money is already there, but if we stated the present, present schedule, we wouldn't be using that money, correct?
Possibly.
I mean, it can't be possibly because we got two and a half hours we're paying somebody for. That's all I'm saying. I mean, it's, it's, you can't, I mean, math is math, you know what I mean? Hour salary is hour salary. You're talking two and a half hours regardless.
Since we're dropping back from 7:30 to 8:00 on the Monday through Saturday?
I get that. That's why I said not five hours because you're opening Wednesday at 1:00, correct? So from seven, so just say you did open, you're opening at 8:00 on Wednesday, from 8:00 to 1:00, that's five hours, correct? So half of that is two hours and 30 minutes. You take your 30 minutes from Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, it's two and a half hours. You still have two and a half hours left over. So somebody has to get paid for those two and a half hours every week. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah, so it's going to be some additional money paid in salaries, you know what I'm saying? Whether the money's already there or not there, you add it up over the year, it's still some extra money.
We were open 62 hours, going to 60 hours.
How are you going to 60 hours? I mean, I'm, I'm still, I'm confused at that because you're just saying 30 minutes difference in the day. So I'm, I'm totally confused on your hours here from what I'm reading. Now, I could be wrong, but nobody's getting what I'm saying. Or is it just me? I mean, Chris, you're great at math, you're normally, you're normally on top of this type of stuff. So I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure it out. Now, I mean, I'm not.
We're going from, we're going to do 60 hours a week now.
Right.
And that's basically 10 hours a day, six days a week. What were we at? What were we working? Do you mean, I mean?
It was 20, it was 28 one week and they alternated back and forth.
I got you.
And then 32.
Two or what, four, yeah, 34, whatever.
I think we missed, Mr. Chairman, I think we're missing the point here. I think the point here is to, to provide a better service to the citizens of Wayne County that's paying for this.
And that's fine. I mean, the service is still the service, you're just providing different hours. All I'm saying is, is a point of, if you say there's no additional cost or no difference in salary, but there's two hours difference, two and a half hours difference in salary, then there's a difference. Don't say something that's not true. That's all I'm saying. Regardless of the services being applied, we can all do the math here.
Okay.
I just asked a simple question, all I just wanted a simple answer. Yes, there's more money in salaries, there's got to be. It's impossible not to be. I mean, that's all. I just wanted to make it clear of that, you know what I mean? It's fine. If, if it does make it simple, but at the same time, I mean, if you want to know the convenience center hours, first thing I do is pick up my phone, look on the internet and see, oh, they're not open today. I can't go right now. It's not that hard, you know what I mean? So all the complaining even from citizens, which, I mean, I don't know how many it is, but still at the end of the day, like, it takes two seconds to do that. I can do it while I'm sitting right here, do it all the time when I go out there, you know what I mean? So I just look, see if it's open, if it's open, fine, if it's not, I load it up and wait till the next day and take it, you know what I mean? It's not that hard.
It costs fuel and everything, they'll try to get it more in line, the six days.
Yeah, I understand, and that's fine. I'm not complaining about that, it's, it's fine if the citizens are happy with it and fine with it. I just ask what was the additional cost. And to not get an answer to that is, is my problem that I have. That's it, but we can move on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
I appreciate what you, you know, looking into it. I'm the one that asking to look into it, try to make it, you know, the same all the way around for every site, every day except for Sunday, the same time, so there's no confusion. Because myself, you know, going to Commissioner Foster's point, I don't, I mean, I went out there twice myself, Wednesday morning, just, you know, but I didn't, you know, just get in my mind, I can go drop it off. So anyway, I want to make a motion, we approve the changes to convenience center hours for the Wayne County landfill.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
To start November 1st.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, item two.
Hang on a second. Item two is a motion to approve task order number four of the master services agreement between the County of Wayne and CDM Smith for the Wayne County DSS Health and Commissioning Services Project and the appropriate budget amendment. Ryan, you got something on that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is similar to the, the scope of work we brought you on the jail, not really any different. It provides you kind of a breakdown of what the services are providing. It's a lump sum payment of 124, 244. So again, this is the same as we did with jail, same company, same framework of this, of the project. So I'll ask any, or answer any questions.
Could you scroll up a little on that? All right. So you outlined the, all of the mechanical systems and next page. I remember on the jail, on the commissioning of this, we updated that to include the generator kicking in automatically if there are a loss of power.
As blackout test, correct?
Blackout test, okay. Have we got something similar to that?
That option is there. I, I, I mean, I don't, we can include that. A lot of the equipment that will be at the Health and DSS actually runs back to 911 without getting too deep into it. It's definitely, it's not overly expensive, so we can definitely do that. That option is there, it's built in that contract. I would assume it to be the ZEX. He actually didn't quote the price, but I would assume it's that same $6,000 range. I'll really do that, I don't know if he wants to do that for Health and DSS or his recommendations.
Oh, you don't, don't see the necessity of it?
We didn't talk about it until the other. Because everything computerized, they've got the, what do you call it, hundred DS, yeah, that?
Electronics.
They're backed up anyway. The generator at the DSS and health department would be nearly as vital as it would be at the jail. If it caused anything, I wouldn't worry about spending our own fat bill.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
All right, we got a motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Okay, item number three is change order number two for the Goldsboro Wayne Airport apron pavement rehab. This is the, with Barbara Brothers Construction, this is addition of existing taxi lane adjacent to the apron pavement that serves the airport sunshade hangars is in poor condition and needs to be replaced. In addition to the pavement condition, the existing pavement has drainage issues that caused water to pond on the taxi lane. This order comes to $62,830.50 in changes. We're looking for approval on that.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the jetport work authorization and budget amendment. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. We now are open for a public comment period? Is that correct?
Nobody signed up, sir.
County managers report?
Uh, no comments.
Well, that was quick. Okay, Board of Commissioners, committee reports. Commissioner Foster.
Um, I don't really have any committee reports, but just have a comment. I'm, you know, been on this board a little over a year and a half, and it's been somewhat taxing and exhausting to sit with members that, you know, we can't do simple things and get simple answers, you know? As a minority member of this board, you know, I can't get answers to simple questions when I ask the attorney, couldn't, couldn't get simple answers when I ask the previous county manager, couldn't get a simple answer today. Certain things that I can't get put on the agenda that deal with minority issues and problems within the county, you know, it's, it's, it's sad that, you know, as a board, we can't discuss certain things and try to get them resolved and certain matters, you know? I sit in the district that I don't even know anything the county's ever even done in the district, you know? Maybe provide some services or something, but anything outside of that, you know, I just don't know where, where my tax dollars and, and the citizens, the citizens in my district tax dollars are going, you know what I mean, to, for anything really in the district, you know what I mean? And it's just, it's exhausting, but I will continue to fight till my term is up. But just wanted to state that, you know what I mean? It's a lot going on here that people don't see, you know what I mean? But I don't know if it's going to get any better. Thank you.
Commissioner Barbara Akon.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gave a short speech for the Clerks 2022 gathering at the Maxwell Center. I want to personally thank our clerk, Ms. Bowden and Kaylee, for their job well done. It looked like it was a big turnout and it was good to see all the clerks being able to join together and, and communicate one another since COVID. Also went to the ribbon cutting at the New Seymour Johnson School. It looks very good for our community to see this happening and I see that from the announcements, they will grow and that is great. Tended the chamber meeting and also had a phone conference with the GWTA on some of their projects that they got going on. And other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wade.
Yes, thank you, sir. No committee report, but I just want to highlight some of the things that have been bothering me in the newspaper lately. You know, we see a lot of our children being harmed in the community, a lot of pedophiles, a lot of people messing with babies, and it's so disappointing, you know? A lot of, a lot of the balance is still going on, young people losing their life at an early age. And, you know, we, our parents, I know some of your, some of our parents are doing the best they can do. But I remember when I was a kid, there was a commercial, it's 10 o'clock, do you know where your child is today? We need to really focus on sitting with our children and, you know, and, and, and explaining to them, you know, how important it is for them to make the right decisions. So parents, you know, make sure that you explain those things to your children. They're our future. And people that are harming our kids, you know, I commend our, lately our magistrates that are giving them high bells because, you know, these people don't need to be in the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. No comment. We call you out, yeah?
It was, it was the look.
Commissioner Gurley.
No, sir.
No comment? Mr. Akon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Commissioner Barbara Akon mentioned, I did attend the ribbon cutting for the new school on base. Also, since then, had the opportunity to speak with the principal at the new school and I think it's, I want to thank the school system and everyone at the base for making this project move forward because I think it's going to be a great asset. I really want to sow it on the start with, but after going out and seeing the, the building that they're in and, and the cooperation that the base is providing, you know, along with to, to the school system, I think we just give this a little time, it's going to be a great project. Also, I have kind of been out of place here lately. My wife has had some issues, health issues, and I just want to thank all the cards and prayers that everyone has provided and all of our, my neighbors know that has provided help me with her or actually help her, you know, kind of on my own. But she's doing much better and I'll be back in the swing of things now. So thank you, everyone.
Glad to hear she's doing better.
Much, much better.
Great.
She, her, the surgery she had was successful, but some of the after effects, we're not quite as young as we used to be, and we don't bounce back as quick, but, but she is, she's doing much, much better, doing, doing, as far as I'm concerned, she's doing great.
Just a couple of comments. I do want to commend the announcement that we had last week in regards to Project Berry, which is Sun Tree Snack Foods. They are, have agreed to purchase our property over on Dixie Trail. That's a long time coming. There has been a lot of history there on that building, and we look forward to the closing date of that. But the, the firm does bring to Wayne County an investment of over $10 million, 94 jobs, and those jobs are exceeding the wages, the average wage here in Wayne County. But the other thing it brings is another revenue source for our farmers, because as they grow peanuts, or if they'll grow the peanuts, I think that there will be a great need there for those peanuts with Sun Tree. So it's, it's a big win for Wayne County. It's a big win for our county in that we are finally going to be ridding ourselves of that building that we bought years ago. But anyway, I congratulate WCDAs on bringing such a business here to Wayne County. Okay, with that in mind, we are, do have a closed session.
I have one thing to add.
Sure.
We also have had some movement and some pre-construction meeting for the Goldsboro Business Campus, so that project is getting moved forward. That's exciting. We should be announcing a groundbreaking soon, so that project is finally getting some traction.
Five years later.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Not, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for the reason of...
To establish position of purchasing property and to consult with your attorneys to preserve attorney-client privilege.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to go into closed session. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, we are now in closed session. All right, anything else to come before the board?
No, sir.
Okay, with that in mind, we adjourn.